Live, uncut, unedited. All right, people, we're coming on in, live, uncut, unedited. We had a great town hall meeting today here on South Shore today. We got a special guest coming on our live tonight. So I'm thinking they's gonna give us an update. You know, I need to know what's going on, you know, hey. It is what it is, an update, an update, update, an update. All right. Um, wait for a few more people come in, let me get some, um. Look at me, I like to shout out some names every now and then. Give me some names on here. All right, Canard the DJ, what's going on, bro? I see you, 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 I see you. All right, come on in, people, this is live, uncut. We streaming live from Facebook, YouTube and Twitter tonight. And if you attended the town hall meeting with Congressman Jonathan Jackson, please call in today, we need to hear from you. We need to hear from you, period, period, period. All right, um, let me do something here. I'm gonna do some breaking rule here. I'm gonna call you from this other phone number. Caller, just hold on. When you see the other number come in, just click on over, okay? The, LaDonna, I'm, yeah, I'm talking, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll call you from this other phone.
All right.
This might, this might work, you know what? It should work, let me see, yeah, yeah, it might work, let me see if they give you. If I leave it right here, it might work, it might work, get the sound. Cause I put it, cause this is the other phone number, it might work, they should be able to hear you.
Yeah.
Testing, one, two, let me test.
Ah, that's a good idea, so can you guys hear me? Testing, testing.
Can you, if you guys can hear her, say yes, if you guys can hear in the live, say yes.
So I was at the town hall meeting.
Okay, say something, keep saying something.
They can hear me, yes, they can hear.
They say yes, okay, that's cool, okay, we, we're good then, we're good. So I just learned something today, I just learned something, cause Norman.
Headphones on, that's what you got, you told me you don't wear headphones, maybe?
I don't wear no headphones. I ain't wearing no headphones, I don't have to. I, I, well, they just, Kenny Nicole, all right, LaCarrie Bakes. All right, who else I see here? Monique McGee, what's up, Monique? All right, all right, Samella Bass, what's going on? We gonna get started, people, we gonna get started. So, um, my guest, LaDonna, I want you to introduce us, tell us what you do, what you all about and all that. And hold on, before you introduce yourself, Lord, I've been knowing her before I had children. So I just wanna let y'all know, I've been knowing her. This ain't no fly by night, nothing like that, been knowing her, been knowing her, been knowing her, go ahead, go ahead, my sister.
Yes, yes, Martin, thank you so much for having me on your show. Um, I see what you're doing and I'm just happy to be a part of it this evening. Uh, my name is LaDonna Ray. And I have, uh, I'm actually a producer of the Wake Up Show Chicago on WVON, uh, for the Illinois State Black Chamber of Commerce. I also have a show called The LaDonna Ray Show, uh, which comes on each and every week on YouTube. But, um, more than, more so than anything, I'm a mother of four. And I am passionate about the community. Um, I pay attention to the trends and things that we need to do as black people to, um, for the betterment of our community. There's, you know, that, that's just who I am. Uh, I'm, I wanna be part of, and I'm glad that we are a part of the betterment of our community. That's in a nutshell.
Okay, now, today, you guys was at the town hall meeting, which I came late, I had to work. So, tell me, was it a bus? Did you learn anything? Was it a waste of time? And I know you're a personal friend of the Congressman Jesse, uh, John, Jonathan, uh, Jackson. So, I mean, give me your honest opinion.
I can't say that I'm a personal friend, I have a personal friend, that's a personal friend.
Okay.
But I'm familiar with the Jackson family, um, as we all are. Here's the thing, at the town hall meeting, I had to be there because the topic of discussion was my, uh, the, the migrat- or the migrate, great, the migration.
Migrants.
The migrants, I couldn't even say the word, thank you, it's been a long day. Um, so the migrants that came to Chicago, um, they don't, they didn't just come to Chicago, they came to Illinois. How are we handling it? So, uh, Jonathan Jackson, Congressman Jonathan Jackson started off with a presentation that he was happy to share with us, which was great. Um, he talked about, you know, what his passion was for the state of Illinois. And he talked about how the migrants, uh, are, uh, to, are to be, um, what the, what the route of their expectations are. And then he talked about what communities are affected. That was great, that was a great prequel to what was about to happen. Uh, he had a little humor in there, which was good as well, but the humor was not funny when it comes to talking about how people were standing in line to give their points, their statements and ask their questions. Most of them stayed on topic and most, uh, I'm sorry, some of them stayed on topic, most of them did not. Uh, I think that we have to learn how to lobby. We have to learn how to go to a town hall meeting and we have to learn how to protest as a black community of people. When you go to a town hall meeting and the topic is, uh, the migrants that are coming into the state of Illinois, then that is the topic of discussion. It is not where you come and ask about youth centers, um, you know, blankets, it, it's just not the place. Because now we have spent more time on trying to address issues outside of the topic of discussion, which is the reason why everyone came in the first place. You have people heckling, I don't know, am I getting too far ahead?
No, no, you're good, you're good, go ahead, yeah, go.
So you have people heckling, somebody said, you know, get rid of Biden. Uh, somebody said, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna vote for, it's like, look, is that, Biden didn't bust those migrants to the state of Illinois and mainly into Chicago. You know, you've got Brandon Johnson, uh, Mayor Brandon Johnson, that is asking for more funding so that he can a- appropriate these individuals properly. Now, I will admit, maybe four weeks ago, maybe five, I was totally against seeing migrants in police stations, old schools, on the streets, um, asking for money. I'm not gonna say begging, and you, please stop saying that. But when you look at the state of Venezuela and Mexico and where they come from, it's like, it's unbearable. So when the price of milk is a gazillion dollars and you can't feed your family, what do you do? Do you just sit there? Do you just, uh, deal with it or do you flee? Do you take your family and say, look, I'm tired of this? Because you and I both know that if we were in a state of, I, of famine and where we cannot feed our families, that we would have to do something about it, and it's not milk or cow. It is grab your family and go, go where? Well, that throw a dart and go somewhere other than where you are. So when they are, uh, when they pour over into our country and then they're brought into our state of Illinois, now, instead of frowning upon them and, 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 and complaining, we kinda need to figure out, because they're still human. Okay, so four or five weeks ago, I felt like, oh, hecky, no, you know what I really said.
Mm-hmm.
But I have had a change of heart because now I'm looking at it from a perspective of, okay, they're here now, what? It's kinda like when people say, well, you decided to have a baby by that knucklehead, so you get what you get, well, the baby's here now, you see? So what, what, they're here now. Um, I'm noticing that someone said, what are migrants asking for, money? They are, I'm noticing at the stoplights, they're, they've got, they're asking for money to feed, you know, they got their signs. Guess what? They came from a country with nothing, right? So now here they are, they don't, it's not like they got jobs, cause if we gave them jobs, we would be complaining about that. Cause it's like, oh, hell no, we've had people, you know, that have been out of work for I don't know how long, and they can come over here and arrive in two weeks, they've already got a career. Well, that's not happening, they're sleeping in tents. So the question is, how do we pull together to make sure that the people that are here, that are citizens, also get the treatment and the funding that they need as well as the money that just popped out of thin air?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh, or the migrants, I'm just saying.
Hmm, we got, you, you, do you wanna take a call? We got a call too.
For sure, come on.
Okay, call, all right, let's do it, okay, uh, makes sense. Now, people, um, I came to the meeting late today.
Yes, you were.
And let me just say this, I've never hit the hard that I wanna see little children and babies and families in the cold, homeless, that's not a good feeling.
No.
Now, I believe in family first, you take care of your own, I believe in, I still hold on to that. But I don't wanna see, I, I don't fault the migrants, I fault the American system that brought them over here. You promised the migrants jobs and this and that, and these people are over here sleeping in tents and, and of course, I'm gonna tell you, if I was in that situation, I probably would be robbing, stealing and killing and doing whatever I can to do for my family. Seriously, but, uh, we're gonna take this caller, um, zero nine three one, go ahead caller, zero nine three one. Come on caller.
Hi, Martin, it's Renee.
Hey Renee, how are you?
Hi Renee.
I'm doing well, how are you?
All right, LaDonna Ray said, hey Renee.
Hey, LaDonna, um, I just wanna make a, a few, um, uh, observations regarding, um, what has been discussed so far. I wanna make it very clear on something that you said, LaDonna, excuse me if I mispronounced your name. Um, if there are migrants who are begging for cash, I strongly suggest that people not give them cash. They are given lots of cash by the US government. And I can stand on that, and I know that to be very true. There's a gas station not that far from my house where I was just in there today to get a pop. And what they do is, the migrants go in there and buy the BP gas station out of house and home of pop and pizza. What they do is they have a translator on their phone, so they translate to the cashiers, if there's a non-speaking cashier there, and tell them what they're looking for. Today, the person who ordered a pizza, cause you have to order the pizza at the, at the register and then take the ticket back to the employee for the pizza to be made there at the gas station. This person pulled out no less than ten one hundred dollar bills. I'm near a district that has thrown out former homeless people who used to live there, and they had strict guidelines on how long they could stay there and when they had to leave. Now, as the direct descendant of veterans and black veterans at that, my concern right now is not for the migrants. And while I know that's the platform here, I can see how America has become so obsessed with the migrants and how it was twenty thousand dollars or, or twenty thousand pesos to buy a gallon of milk, which if, if now that you're all are, are saying this and it's coming to light, it kinda makes sense now that we now know they didn't walk to the border. We do know that they flew and we do know that they took rail cars and they slept on the top of them. And then some of them walked certain, uh, portions to get to the border. I think what we need to do is sever the ties, because what has happened is, is that this has opened my eyes as a former homeless person that we can take care of other people immediately, but we cannot take care of our homes. If all of a sudden the city can ask the federal government for funding for migrants, for buildings that were closed, uh, boarded up and, and get, uh, electricians in there to make, make sure, make sure that electricity is running, hot and cold water's running, uh, make sure that there's air running. Surely we can do that for those at Pacific Gardens, those who are staying at the Salvation Army, those who are staying under, uh, the viaduct. And if you are giving money to people who are standing there at a viaduct asking for cash, this is what I recommend you do, are you giving money to people who are hypes? Or are you giving money to people who are gypsies? Because if you are giving money to gypsies, those people are driving away in their Mercedes, in their Mercedes, which are blocked, which are parked a half a block away. And I've seen it happen. So I think we really need to start to sever the ties here with this whole migrant story. And we really need to start focusing on the homeless people here in the city of Chicago. These people have gone into TJ Maxx and Marshalls and they have better looking clothes than I do. And I work in corporate America. I don't have a problem shopping at Royal or Luxe.
Yeah, hold on, sir.
Going to TJ Maxx or any other place. What I'm saying is, we are taking care of people who don't, who are not American, and we can't even take care of the people who live here who are Americans.
Wrap it up Renee, okay, cause I got more calls. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, before you comment, LaDonna, let me take this other call too, cause I hate to have him staying on too long. Um, thirty-two sixty-eight, thirty-two sixty-eight, go ahead caller.
Good evening, Martin.
Hey, Mr. Roosevelt, how are you?
Okay, um, first of all, before anything, let me first of all say hello to you and your guest. And I have to also say from the beginning, no, I was not at the town hall. I didn't even know one was taking place, because if I would've known one was taking place, I would've been there to add my voice along with the voices of other frustration of even my, you know, the last caller that came on, cause I echo every single thing that she just said. That we in, in America, and it just frustrates me so much. That sometimes, that we are just so, so enamored, and so, you know, wetting the panties to take care of some pieces of trash that just came here, first of all, breaking the law illegally, coming, coming over here and you're not even taking care of the people who we have here first. I mean, we live, first of all, in the United States of America. And it's no way in this, they, they say America's the greatest country in the whole world. They say that we're the richest country in the whole world. And there's no way in this country that anyone should be out on the street, especially our citizens and homeless veterans. But yet, I mean, I always thought the expression was, even biblically, it even says that, you know, charity begins at home, then spreads abroad. But I think this is something that our government and, you know, our mayor and, you know, um, America has just simply forgotten about. They're just catering to a whole bunch of other people who, first of all, don't even belong here. They, these people have not been vetted, a whole lot of these people are criminals, belong to certain gang organizations that I'm not gonna name on your show, but far much more dangerous than any other kind of black gang organization I could ever name. They walk around the streets and everything just like they own the streets, walking around with these backpacks on, Lord knows what's only in these backpacks, getting into it with black people in their community. And when the police come, all of the black people get locked up and they, nothing ever happens to these illegal aliens. Yeah, I'ma stop calling them, I, I, I'ma call exactly what it is, illegal alien.
Let, let her respond, Roosevelt, I wanna see if she wanna, you wanna respond to that.
Well, you know what, you should've been at the town hall meeting, that's all I got to say. Um, however, you know, I hear what you're saying there, we can always categorize.
You can't hear, just hold on, okay, go ahead, sister, go ahead.
Not able to hear me, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Um, okay, so.
You're real low.
Real low, turn your phone on, hold on, no, just turn your phone earpiece up, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll, I'll do it this way, how about that? Um, you should've been at the town hall meeting because topics like these needed to come to the forefront so that our congressional leaders can hear them. But at the same time, I know that we're able to look at, you know, obviously there's gonna be a label regardless. When people are illegally coming in and flooding and fleeing, we're going to look at that aspect of it. But at the same time, they're still human, okay, they're still human. And what is the solution? Because I heard Renee say, they're bus, they're coming in in buses and, and we're doing something about helping them, and what about the people at home? Absolutely, but the people at home have been systematically, uh, pushed through a system that has been the same since I can remember. You know, you, you become homeless, you go into Pacific Gardens and you may get some help and you may not, you have a curfew. Those people to the government are taken care of, I'm not agreeing with that. But when people show up at your door on a bus, it's like, oh! So maybe we need to shake things up when it comes to the people that are here already, I'm just saying.
All right, next caller, next caller, uh, seventy-nine ninety-seven. First you couldn't hear, now, what, what's your problem now, sir? Seventy-nine ninety-seven.
I'm on me?
Yeah, bro, can you hear?
Uh, yeah, I ain't hear everything.
Bro, you put, you put your earpiece on.
Yeah, I wanna ask the lady, um, I wanna ask the lady, um, because I see them, I'll go to downtown in the Loop area like every week, I see them in Foot Locker buying up a whole bunch of gym shoes, and I see them in Marshalls also, so they get, they got money, they got plenty of money. They just want free housing, because that's what they was promised. But they have the money to get their own apartment if they want to.
So what's your question?
Is that correct, ma'am?
I, I don't know what they have, I, I don't, I'm not part of that.
No, I'm somebody as far as getting every mon- money every month.
I, I never said that, that was the, what the caller said, I'm not familiar with what they get every month. I know our people get money every month and go get gym shoes also, so I, I don't know.
That's what I meant, her.
Yeah, you know, so, uh, is she still, is Renee still on the phone?
Oh, Renee.
Well, we not talking about our people.
Right.
Yeah.
We talking about them.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, what, what do we expect? See, here's the thing, what do, what do we expect them to do? Do we expect now, we know that money is coming to them in some kind of way, form or fashion. When you pass by the police station, you see people out there feeding people in thirty degree weather, but they're outside the whole time. So what do we expect them to do? If we expect them to look the part, or what do we expect them to do? I'm asking, what should they be doing with their money? Or the money?
Sir? Sir?
Well, not begging me for money for one, cause I'm not gonna give it to them.
Okay, that's number one, number two.
Give my people the money first. Our people, for anybody.
Now, you know.
Hey, that's me.
Yeah, okay, so, but they do need shoes, they, they do need shoes though. So where should they get them? Ames is out of business, so where should they get their shoes?
No, they get the shoes from Foot Locker, I, I go to downtown like almost every week, I send them to Foot Locker and Marshalls.
No, she asking you a question. She, what, what she's, the question she's asking you, okay, they need shoes, they need clothes, they have to go to these places to shop from these places. So it's not, it's not a cardinal sin for them to go to Foot Locker, Walmart and things like that. They have needs too as well, that's what she's saying.
I knew that.
So, you know, so when you see them in there.
They have the money already.
Right, okay.
But they're begging us for the money. But they have the money already, that's what I'm saying, that's all.
I, I can't see myself giving them enough to go get a hundred and seventy-five dollar pair of shoes. Whether they go downtown or not, the, the price is the price. But I, I understand that they, there, there are some people that are here that are begging for money that don't need to beg for money, you know what I'm saying? I, I don't wanna say that each and every person that has come here on a bus is this or that. I understand we need to take care of home first, I get that. I know that's where the frustration is, because let me tell you something. When I see a migrant send their student to my son's school with an IEP where it's being managed and, and the children that have IEPs already, they're not being managed? Because that, that migrant will surpass my kid. That migrant was, because they're gonna make sure he does, because they're going to manage, he's gonna be able to speak English in less than six months. He's going to know the math, the algebra, everything. While we have citizens here that have IEPs that won't even be able to get past the, the next grade unless they are passed through. They're getting passed over. So I have an issue with that. But I also have issue that it takes them to come into our state for us to re- really start complaining about the current issues that we have in place already. We, we, we should've been on this rant. We, we, those people in that line that were, you know, fussing and cussing and being upset.
It's Renee.
Okay, Renee called back in, okay.
Hey Renee.
I am on the phone.
Okay, you wasn't on, you, you hung up though, you had hung up, uh, okay.
Okay, those people that were in line, those people that were in line talking about, you know, what issue.
How much money they get every month?
Uh, sir, 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 sir.
Really?
No, that ain't Roosevelt, that's other guy, gentlemen, listen, brother, yeah, yeah, bro, you can't do that, no outbursts, bro. The sister's talking, man, all right, go ahead, go ahead, LaDonna.
I, I'll land with this, the, the people that were in line talking at the town hall meeting, they brought up their issues, yes, but we can't solve them in one town hall meeting. But these issues that were brought up should've been brought up before today. These are not new issues. The newest piece are the migrants, yes, but the issues that we have had in our community have been here. So we should've been talking about this.
Let, let me say something, I'm gonna add a little addition to that. And I said the same thing, I think, earlier when we, none of us, and I'm not, and I'll say some of us, we didn't care about the homeless population. When we see them downtown rallying in the club, we, we, we look at them and, and discuss. Don't say anything. So now that the.
Martin, who are you speaking to?
No, no, I'm, I'm speaking to, uh, my sister, I'm speaking in general, talking about us. A lot of us didn't care about the homeless population, I'm talking about before the migrants got here, I'm talking about.
Well, Martin, I had to tell you, Martin, as I've shared with you before on your platform, my phone, my family and I were homeless when I was a child. So I, I think what you need to say is, there are some people of your audience or those in the community or those who are Chicagoans who don't and having.
I didn't say everybody, Renee, I didn't say everybody, I said some of us.
No, no, I understand that.
And didn't care about the homeless.
But here's the thing though, Martin, but here's the thing, Martin, right? There's a difference between being born here and being homeless and having Pacific Garden moved decades ago further away from where we could get to them and where they would have decent clothes and good food, right?
Right, Renee, let me just, I, I understand what you're saying. Okay, I worked with the homeless population for like three and a half years, so I was a case manager, so I'm very familiar with the situation, so I'm, 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 I know what I'm talking about, I understand, I hear what you're saying. What I'm saying is, the point I'm saying is, what LaDonna said, we should've been making a fuss about our homeless population here in the city of Chicago. That, that's what I'm saying, that's what she's saying, we should've been made this fuss.
And here, here's the thing, but here's the thing though, Martin, is that no one in their right mind would've imagined that the city of Chicago or the federal government would've all of a sudden come up with all of this funding for people who weren't born here, Martin?
Mm-hmm.
That is part of the issue, is that we have been making a ruckus about the people who are homeless or people who were for, who former homeless people like myself. You have the night ministry that is out there looking for help, the Greater Chicago Food Depository that is out there looking for help. There is no reason why people who have supposedly walked here from Venezuela, which if you believe that, 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 that means you believe and have read the Warren Commission Act on the JFK assassination and you believe it. And that I'm telling you is about, it, it's a bunch of bull. There is no reason why they should have better clothes than we do. If they are shopping and there are people who are pulling up to these police stations, okay? And giving people brand new clothes, but yet they can't go to the viaduct and give those people brand new clothes. The city of Chicago can't put out the garbage cans for the people at the tent cities. Martin, the police station near, near me, they get, I could send you photos and I'm gonna send them to you via messenger. They get cases upon cases of bottled water, cases upon cases of fresh fruit and a catered meal throughout the day.
I'm, I understand.
What about the tent people?
And, and listen.
That is part of the issue here.
Yes, it is an issue.
We are the citizens here, they are not.
Right.
And let me make another, let me give you a great point, Martin.
Renee, Renee.
Wait, wait, I have a friend that, wait, Martin, this is a really good point. I have a friend who is Filipino. And you know what she told me? She said, Renee, when my parents were coming here from the Philippines, there was some, some law that the US government told them in order to move to America, they had to abide by specific guidelines in order to become American citizens. And you know what, Martin? They followed them to a T because they were afraid to be deported back to the Philippines. And what I see, the migrants from Venezuela who were paying twenty thousand dollars or twenty thousand Venezuelan dollars to get a gallon of milk for, they're now coming over here and paying with hundred dollar bills. Martin, where are they getting the cash from?
The government's giving them the money, you know that, you know that, and I know that.
Martin, I know that, but that's what I'm saying.
What, listen.
Why aren't our own citizens being taken care of?
Listen, listen, let me tell you something, let me explain to you what's going on. First of all, the people that you see coming over here from Venezuela, they are army age men. They are, uh, eighteen and up, they're, if you notice, there's no seniors, no. They are, uh, eighteen and up. There, if you notice, there's no seniors, no ones in wheelchairs on the walking cane. All the strong men and families, young ladies, pregnant, some of them pregnant, with little bitty children. Now, first of all, they have told the migrants that we have job and housing for you. If you come to America. So they have paved the way for them to come over here. And you, listen, you're one hundred percent right what you said, but they have made a way for them to come over here. It's nothing but propaganda. They want them to be labor. They always say, well, they gonna do the job that we don't want, but that's not true. That's not true.
That's not true. I totally agree with you, Martin.
So it's, it's a US government problem. It's not a Brandon Johnson problem. It's the US governed problem, problem. They paying these migrants, and listen, they just not moving as fast enough. Some of us, right now, some of them don't have anything, and some of them do have some things. I told you guys when we first started talking about this, that I got a word that they was giving. Each adult five thousand dollars and each child fifteen hundred. And adults will get after that, they give four mil- three meals a day, do their laundry. And also to give them two hundred dollars a, a month. I think it was a week, weekly. I told, nobody wanted to believe me. Nobody wanted to believe me when I said it. I got word of, I got a source that told me what was happening. Now, when it came out on the media, they get nine thousand, now everybody wanna make a big fuss. So I don't know where they mysteriously getting this money from, because when we asked for reparations, they say, well, let's do a study. It's always excuse. It's, we're being replaced. Just see it. I just see it. We're being replaced.
What do you mean by we're being replaced?
I, I think we're being replaced, actually, for labor. That's what I think.
For labor?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so.
I, that's my opinion. Go ahead.
Are you familiar with the seven hundred thousand ju- uh, sanction that was lifted? For Venezuelans to be able to work legally, if they are illegal aliens, okay? They, that was passed, okay? So those seven hundred thousand jobs that can be filled by pe- folks that are, that don't, that aren't here. Besides.
I just sent you some photos via messenger.
Okay.
We're the ones, okay, so when you look at the unemployment rate, the unemployment rate, it seems lower. Based on the administration.
No.
But, but that's a lie, because when the unemployment rate is reported, it's based on people that qualify for unemployment. If you don't qualify for unemployment and you're unemployed, you're not part of that number. If you're given seven hundred thousand jobs to people that have not followed the laws. That are not legally, uh, migrated here, then you're taking away from the resources that we need in our own community. Now, I still say that they're human. I'm not gonna back away from that.
Right, of course.
I still say, where the heck are they supposed to buy their shoes and clothes from? So I'm not concerned about if they're, if, as long as they're not in the Louis Vuitton line, okay? I don't care where they get their clothes from. But my thing is, when we don't bring up these issues that are going on locally. In a timely fashion and stay consistent with it, because money can magically appear for COVID. Let's not forget that. COVID came up and suddenly they had government funding for COVID. Everybody was making money. You got PPP coming up all of a su- everybody was getting in on that. So money is available, and when it comes to talking about what money is going where, you have to lobby for it. You have to hold your le- your leaders accountable. These people are in office and they're not there to do the work. They're there to make, you're there, you're supposed to vote them in and make sure they do the work. And on top of that, if you didn't vote for them, you still have to make sure they did the work. You can't say, oh, I didn't vote for them, so I, I'm gonna wait till my turn comes up to vote someone in. No, you hold them accountable.
Okay, now, I wanna throw a number at you. Now, and right here in Illinois. Forty-seven percent of black men from ages eighteen to, I believe, twenty-five, unemployed. Okay, now, they, they are brought over here for the work, workforce, labor force. So, but that's.
Let me just say something, Martin. Her, a co- a comment that she just made is telling me that she's not watching the news. She just said that she doesn't care where they're getting their clothes from, right? As long as it's not Louis Vuitton or X, Y, and Z.
I do watch the news, just so you know.
Anyone who has been following the news about the crime that has been committed by those from Venezuela. Those people, not all of them, have gone into Macy's and stores downtown. And have robbed them blind. As a matter of fact, I believe I just read. That a judge last week dro- dropped three robbery cases. From a migrant who stole a couple of thousand dollars worth of merchandise from. Now, who would come here with this grand fair story about how we walked here for so many miles? X, Y, and Z, we don't have anything, and their clothing is immaculate compared to those who are at. The, who need fu- get funding from the night ministry or who need help from the night ministry. Those who are looking for food from Greater Chicago Food Depository or Nursing Hope. Those who are from the Salvation Army or the different homeless shelters. Look at those clothes and compare it to the migrants.
Okay.
By the way, if she's not worried about the clothes that they're getting or where they're coming from, you know what I'm worried about, my, uh, Martin? I'm worried about how they're getting cars. I'm worried about how they're getting motorcycles. I'm worried about how they're getting Divvy bikes. I'm worried about how they're getting scooters, because by the way, the district near me, there had been almost two car accidents by migrants. Who have cars. And in the state of Illinois, you need to have a driver's license and you need to have insurance. When you drive off the lot. And I'd like to know where they're getting the funding at to get these type of items.
Okay.
Look it up in the news. Someone was just arrested because they were driving a vehicle without a license.
Renee, you must have not been watching the news.
She wasn't listening earlier either when.
I'm, I'm saying, your, your guest, when she said she didn't care as long as they weren't getting it from Louis Vuitton. If they're buying a car, obviously they can shop in Louis Vuitton.
Renee, I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I'm not talking about that whatsoever. You're talking about theft. I'm not, I, that I do care about. I'm talking about earlier when the gentleman mentioned that he goes downtown. And, and first of all, downtown does not, is not creme de la creme. But when you go downtown and you see these migrants shopping for their gym shoes and their clothing. And my question was, well, where should they shop? That was my question, and that's what I was referring to when I said I don't care where they get their gym shoes and their clothes from. Because if they're at Marshalls or, I mean, I go to Ma- well, I don't care for Marshalls, but I have gone to Marshalls. And yes, I go to Foot Locker for my kids' shoes, but I wanna know what the solution is. What are they supposed to do when it comes to having to go get clothes? So, yes, I watch the news and, and just know that. I understand your concern. You're absolutely valid in saying, hey, you get, if they're. By getting cars and, and, and things of that nature, how are they driving it without a license? Cause I got brothers that have been locked up and incarcerated, and I'm not talking about my brothers, I'm talking about our brothers. That have been incarcerated that can't even get a driver's license. Or yet, those that have, uh, fallen behind on their child support that can't get a driver's license or have, have had their cars booted. That cannot move forward in society where they actually live. So, yeah, them coming over here and getting a leg up or boots and straps and all of that stuff, yeah, that's an issue. So I was referring to what we were talking about earlier, but I do understand your concern about, you know, them, uh, adding to the. Uh, factor of being a little bit more dangerous because they are not driving in the legal aspect. And so on.
Okay, what I do know too is they do have, uh, immigration lawyers. And they do, they can give you a driving permit to drive while you're in the States and all that, that I, I've looked that up, so that I do know. So it's a lot of things that we don't know that's happening, and we're making a fuss. And, and I think we have a rightful, uh, legit to make a fuss. You know, I, I just, me personally, it's, I hate to see how people left behind. When I say our people, those that sleep in a tent city, no matter if they're white, black, Hispanic, whatever. Because homelessness don't have a color. But I've been told that it's over, what, sixty-eight thousand people? Here homeless in the city of Chicago or the state of Illinois? Sixty-eight thousand? Oh, wow, that's a lot. That is a lot. Roosevelt, go ahead. Let me still there, Roosevelt. Mr. Roosevelt.
Yeah, sorry about that, Martin. I had to unmute.
Okay.
Because, um, it's hard to hear the guest, so I, it's almost like, um, you know, whenever she's talking, it's like I put the. Um, the TV up a little bit, but I have to mute my phone, so it won't be a, a echo.
Okay.
So that's what I was doing.
All right.
Um, but my whole concern, like I said, is that, you know, even about crime. I mean, cause there, there was a, I don't know if you know it, uh, but, uh, at Sixty-third Street Beach, this past summer. There was like a six or seven year old girl who was sexually assaulted by an illegal migrant. And this person was left to escape. And there was a fight in between some elderly black people on Sixty-fourth Street. You know, right where Wives was.
Okay. I heard it. But, okay. All right, put your phone on mute.
No, I'm gonna do that. I'll do that.
All right, all right, uh, LaDonna.
Yes.
You wanna go through some of these comments and we can read some of these comments off and address some of these, uh, concerns?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're gonna start, start with, uh, Angela B. Whitfield says, um, half of my friends and family don't have driver licenses. Uh, they buy cars. You, are you have to buy a cheap car with insurance or something? I guess I'm trying to understand what you're saying. So I know in the state of Illinois that you're not supposed to be driving a car without insurance. We know that. We very well know, know of that. Go to support, uh. So let me ask you a question. So what made you have a change of heart, the way you think?
Um, in watching the news. You know, I'm. I'm looking at, you know, the war between, well, actually, obviously the wars that are going on right now. And how these innocent people are being targeted intentionally. These are war crimes. Um, my kids and I read the book, The Art of War. And everything that is listed out on how to defeat the enemy and how, and, and what will cause your defeat. Are ringing true. And, but the sad part is, when you see those innocent people that had nothing to do with any of this. Being blown out of their own environment, not having access to food, and let alone healthcare. Uh, or even, uh, the, the reactive healthcare that needs to happen if they're injured. Um, children are dying. Children are being targeted. You've got hostages. All of these situations going on. And imagine if that were going on here. You know, these are still humans. Like, if I, when I look at them, I still see that they are God's children. And God didn't put me here and say, okay, look, you, in fact, God didn't even put me here, okay? I'm supposed to be somewhere else, but that's another story. My thing is, when I see those humans being targeted intentionally and they have nothing to do with these wars. And I know that the people that are coming here have other situations going on, but when they're here, they're still human. And that's the humans, the hu- the humility in my heart. So that's what made me have a change in heart, because I do not wanna jump on the bandwagon of being angry at a certain group of people. Because we've been fighting that all of our lives.
Well, they, was the difference between us and them, we was forced to come over here. They wasn't forced to come over here. So they came over here on their own, volunteered with a promise.
Well, you know, Ben Carson said we were migrants, so I, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, listen, we was here before the Indians. I'll say that. That's another subject, but, um, it, it's real, people. I, I, I'll say this. Now, I believe in charity begins at home first. And I believe I'm a religious, spiritual person, and I love all people. You know, I don't wanna see nobody outdoors. I don't wanna see anybody die. And you brought something to my attention, okay? I know they receiving money. I've been knowing it. Now, okay, they have this money. They're gonna spend the money. So they have to go to Walmart and different places like that, you know? Um, America, to, to me, this is my opinion, my opinion. To me, this is a slap in the face to black people. Because if Chicago is so violent and so bad and so horrible, why would you bring migrants to Chicago? Allow them coming right in our neighborhood and the black community where you say it's so much shooting and killing and black on black crime? What's really going on? So I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just saying that, this is my opinion now, my opinion, everybody has an opinion. But I'm saying in my mind, okay, if they bringing the migrants right here where they say it's so dangerous to live. All this shooting, gang infested, drug infested, black on black crime. They bringing them here, bringing them on the south and the west side of Chicago. What's re- what's really going on? I'm sorry.
I was, uh, often thinking that, did they do that because we have another now elected black mayor in Chicago? I was wondering.
Marcus.
Yeah. Okay, um, you know what? Black people are mad when you hear about them giving the migrants nine thousand dollars. And they bark about black people wanting to get on public aid because the system. Has dealt black people a bad hand that's already been here in this country, born and raised and sacrificed. I mean, a lot of us, we go to work every day. We work all our lives. We watched our parents work. Only to achieve nothing. They tell you to buy life insurance and at a certain age, if you're not dead by that time, the life insurance run out. They don't wanna give us what they're giving the migrants. What they were saying that we were lazy and don't wanna work, they're giving it to the migrants. Those people came over here by choice. They knew that they were coming over here illegally. And they came over here by choice. The difference with them and us is we were brought over here by force, and we're the descendants of slaves. Who was treated less than a human being in this country. And so we should be angry, and then they put them in our community. You know, I, I believe that all people are children of God, and I'm not saying go get a rifle and start shooting immigrants or migrants down. Or none of that. But those people weren't forced to come over here. They're running over here because it's un- it's, it's not no stable. Government in their own country, and America is allowing them to come over here to replace the black man. And some black people don't wanna accept it like that, but that's what's about to happen. They're in our community, they're not in the white neighborhood. They're not out in Hoffman Estate. They're not in them rich, lily, white neighborhoods. They're the ones bringing them over here. It doesn't matter if you vote Democrat or Republican. Both parties are for this. It's cheap labor. And they're the replacements. If you ever saw that movie, The Replacements. So black people are angry because they're not getting the same resources. That they've been marching and fighting for for years. If you can give nine thousand dollars to each one of these migrants, why can't you give it? Why can't you give black people reparations? Why can't you give us what is owed to us, instead of telling us, we gotta work for it? You need, they do credit sets for you to get a job.
Let me say something, Marcus. Hold on, Marcus, we got another caller. I wanna say to, uh, our guest, LaDonna, did you know, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, did you know, we have seventy-seven communities here in the city of Chicago? And you know, there's not one white community, wh- there's not one white community that's poor. But all the blacks are poor. Factual. But we got a new caller. Hold on, Marcus, we got a new caller. O-six-nine-one. Hey, caller, you're live, uncut, unedited. Come on, caller.
Hey, Martin.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, I just wanna say, um, you, you really made a comment earlier, uh, about why it's happening to Chicago. They wanna bust up our political power that's in Chicago and New York. That's the goal. They wanna, they, they tired of. They want to, they tired of black folks. We run our course with America, and we have to see this. The sister stated earlier that we, that we allowing the migrants to bring up our issues and things like that. Um, we've been bringing these issues up. It's not we just now bringing these issues up. They just now hearing them, and it's on the forefront now. These issues are being brought up. We've been begging for reparations forever, haven't we?
Yeah.
They don't give a damn about black folks, and we have to see that. We should have been got the Democratic Party out. That's what the issue is. The issue are the Democrats.
Okay.
They pretend that they, that it's, uh, they are positive light and that they, they better than the Republicans. But at the end of the day, it's still white supremacy.
Yeah.
That's the goal. Uplift white supremacy.
Let me ask you a question, uh, sir. Now, if the black people start voting red, we'll just say Republican, just hypothetical speaking, what is it you think the Republicans gonna do for us?
I don't believe, I don't believe the Republicans. I believe the Republicans gonna be worse than the Democrats are, unless we have a conversation. The Democrats are not willing to negotiate. We need to sit down with the Republicans and have a negotiation.
Well, let me, let me.
The Democrats not trying to hear.
Yeah, well, let me just educate you a little bit. We've, in the last 30 years, we've got more out of the Democrats than we've got out of the Republicans. We can negotiate now. We know.
Get out of, uh.
I'm just telling you, brother. I'm just telling you, we've got more out of Democrats. Get anything, least we can negotiate with them and get some things, you know?
But, uh, let me ask you, Martin, what have you got from them, though?
Yeah, we've got a lot of things. Right now, let me just say this. Right, hold on. Right now, the Republicans are trying to pass where they could cut Medicare and Medicaid. Who you think that's going to affect mostly? Who do you think that's going to affect mostly? See, right now, we, this is what we need to do as black folks. The Democratic Party is not perfect. Listen, we know.
The Democratic Party is another form of white supremacy, Martin.
Yes, it is, of course.
The Republicans are no good, and the Democrats are no good.
Well, what do we do then? Okay, we stop voting Democrat. What do we do? You tell me.
The best thing we can do is to, is to stop being functional in a society that's not working for us. That's what we need to do.
Then what?
We get up every day.
Okay, sir.
We get up every day and function in a society that's not working for us.
Listen, we understand.
For decades.
So what we, we're gonna do, we just gonna let, we just gonna stop, we gonna fold our hands up, stop fighting?
Stay home from the polls. That's what we do.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Oh, come on. Come on now, Roosevelt. You know better than that now.
Oh, no.
Come on now, Roosevelt. We gonna just let these white folks just vote anybody in and push any policy that they want?
No, no, that's just the way a whole lot of us are feeling now. I mean, because if there's a whole bunch of people, whether it's Democrat or whether it's Republican, who is not dealing with our issue, who's not dealing with, because there's two things that I would like to see done. I would like to see anytime police shoot a black person, I would like to see some kind of police change or some kind of change or whatever, as far as that goes, and also a talk on reparations. But if anyone can, I mean, why would you keep on putting these kind of people in office who do not have your best interest at heart? And I mean, people like Joe Biden and so plenty of other Democrats, and even, you know, Johnson, they have proven it, that they don't have our best interests at heart. Anytime you could give all this stuff and all this attention to migrants and all this kind of stuff, just to see whether they're much more comfortable, and plus you're giving all the rights and stuff to LGBT and making sure abortion is kept legal, but nothing for, like, me and you, like Marcus said, for us, you know, anytime reparations come up, what do they always say? Oh, well, um, you know, we gotta do a study or whatever. But yet, no one needed a study to give money to migrants? No one needed a study to send money to Israel? No one needed a study to send money to Ukraine? No one needed a study to pass rights for LGBT? No one needed a study for, to keep abortion legal? It's only when it comes down to us, they act like this is some kind of deep, dark, secret mystery that somebody got to solve. Us as black people, we're tired of it.
And we gotta get up and, and we feel, this is, I agree with everything that you just said, my brother. But my, the thing, what I'm saying is also as well to add on what you is. But tomorrow, we still gonna get up and function in their society. We still gonna get up and pay their bus, and pay to get on their bus. We still gonna get up and go work at these white folks' jobs. We still gonna go to these white folks' grocery stores. We don't own no schools. We don't own no hospitals. We don't own no banks. We don't own nothing.
If I may jump in, I hear what you're saying, but if black people stop going to work right now, they don't eat tomorrow, or their kids starve, their kids die. And I ain't just talking about bullets. So it's not that easy. Do, do the black community have a backup plan like some of the unions have? When they go on strike, they take care of the people that's on the picking line, the people that's affected by the strike? You can tell people to not function in this society, but unfortunately, the people who control the money don't look like us. Our faith ain't even on the money. No matter how these black politicians, they are, some of them are puppets. They're there, and they're being controlled by the unseen government called the billionaires, the 1% who controls everything. Even the white politician that's in office is puppet. Joe Biden and all, um, are puppets. Trump was a billionaire. He came out of his closet. But the Republicans ain't gonna do no more for the, for the people, for our people, than the Democrats have done. We need to form our own political party and set a voter's block and have our people to vote for that one person. And these candidates, these black candidates, need to quit competing against each other and support that one candidate that's strong enough. That's how we put Harold Washington in office. But a lot of black people are blaming Harold Washington for making this city a sanctuary city. I believe Mayor Harold Washington was trying to make sure that he stayed in office. And he thought that the Latinos and all of them was our friends, and unfortunately, he found out after he died or was assassinated, that they weren't our friends.
Let me, I'm gonna say this to you, say, add this as well to you, my brother, that if, when COVID came, a lot of issues came to the foresight, like, to people's face of racism. White folks saw it on TV. It was in their face. The world was shut down. If we shut down our interactions with this white supremacy society, for I give it about six months, they will see that, and they will have to make a difference. They will have to make a change. Us continuing to function and make their society work, this is not doing nothing but prolonging the issue. We must eat, sleep, breathe liberation. We cannot continue to function in a society that's not meant for us. They don't give a damn. They don't give a damn. They giving $105 billion. That man asking for $105 billion, half of that would have rode a reparations check. They not giving it to you. They not giving it. The reason, they got 30,000 Ukrainians, uh, immigrants that came here. Of our social security. Of, of, they never pay no taxes. It's a race thing. They white. The Ukrainians are white. We don't hear about them coming at all. Because they, they got housed, and they got taken care of. These folks, Venezuelan folks, are just a little darker. They don't like them as much as they don't like us. It's a, the darker you get, the more the hate get. And we need to understand that. We need to stop functioning in a society that's not meant for us. We need to get up and bring this shit to their door.
And if we can't get it, we need to shut down the aid officers. All the places that giving it to them, we need to be there. We need to come off our jobs. I hear you. We need to come out of our schools. Five or 10 people ain't gonna do it. 20 people ain't gonna do it. But the entire black community, not just here in Chicago, but nationwide, if we can't get it, we gonna stop y'all from getting it. If we have to block the streets, you can bring in the Army, you can bring in the National Guard, but it's more of us than the National Guard, and the whole world is watching it. How can you take care of other people and you can't take care of your own damn citizens who put in hard work in this country, and you slapping us in the face, taking our resources, taking our tax dollars, and giving it to another group of people? We can't shut this country down. I hear what you're saying. Trust me, I'm not against what you're saying. And I wish it would happen, but we got to, we got to go to people's gas and comment and all. Let me tell them your damn truck ain't rolling to shut nobody off. We gotta go to the aid officer. If we can't get the aid, y'all ain't giving nobody aid.
Exactly, my brother. That's the plan. Yeah.
We got a new caller. New caller. 912, Eric Cole. Go ahead, caller.
What's going on, Martin? This Sarge giving you a holler. Oh, I'm doing good. I'm doing good. You know, the thing that I can't figure out is when all these things are being brought up as Medicaid, Medicare, uh, public assistance, all of this, the big focus on all of it with black Americans when we are the absolute total minority that are getting these services.
Okay.
That, that, that's mind-boggling. When you talk about welfare alone, and you all could go research the data for the numbers that are gonna put out. You have over 69 million whites that own welfare. You don't have 69 million black Americans that are United States citizens in this country.
Okay.
Medicare, Medicaid, as a black man, come on, we know on average the lifespan of the average black man. Now, black women live longer. Yeah, of course. But, uh, a lot of black men do not live long enough to even get to the point that they could doggone benefit from those government subsidies.
Oh, you think so? Black men, we live.
That's great, my Sarge.
I know so.
No, no, Sarge, come on now. Come on now. Come on now. We not gonna make no excuse for somebody that want to cut something.
I'm not, I'm not making excuses, Martin. You know, I never do that.
Okay.
I never make excuses.
Okay.
We have been, another, another issue that we must address, that we don't address in the black community, is what are these black churches doing besides selling herself?
Ooh.
Oh, yeah, they want to hit that one. They want to hit that one.
Oh, that's a rabbit hole. That's a rabbit hole. I don't, I don't.
Hold it, hold it, hold it. Let's get it, let's think back in now. Hold it, hold it, hold it now. Let me ask you, black men, a question. What is it the black man doing? I'm gonna sit back and wait and listen to the answer.
Get, if, get up every day, me specifically, if you want to know.
No, brother, the question is.
I go, I go to the park, I go to the park just to work with youth every day.
What, what are the black men doing?
I.
What, what are black men doing in this country to make this place better?
Killing each other.
What are we doing? You said killing each other.
What you're supposed to be doing.
Okay.
What you're supposed to be doing, now I could be wrong. What you're supposed to be doing is fathering and mentoring your kids, especially your sons, to make them to be better men than you were. I mean, that's what I did. Now, you know, all the rest of it, I get plenty of people from Inglewood saying, and you sold out the hood, and you don't come back and do this. It's like, bruh, I was a high school senior for three years, just like a lot of other people. You all had the same opportunities I had. You just didn't take them. So, you know, don't try to throw up because I made a choice that was a good one. When you chose to be running the streets, which was a bad one. It's all about choices. I'm from Inglewood. I know what it is.
So, my thing is, let me, let me just say this. We, we talk what ain't happening. We, as black people, we can identify a lot of problems, but we have no solutions. We're not organized. Why you think our politicians?
Exactly, Martin.
Hold it, hold it. Now, let me talk. Let me talk. Let's get some order in the house now. Listen, that's why we get treated the way we get treated, because we're not organized. When we don't have a voter's block, they can predict, listen, why you think our politicians can get along, go along with the white establishment? Because we don't hold them accountable. We use that word, hold them accountable. So most people that say, hold them accountable, this is what they say, we gonna vote them out the next time. You don't do what I say. We need, we need not to wait for two years or four years to hold them accountable. We need to go to their house. We need to put signs in front of the house, call them traitors, liars, whatever we need to do, we need to do it. We can't afford to wait no two-year term and no four-year term to hold a politician accountable for messing up over us. We can't do that no more. That's all people, well, we gonna vote them out next time. We gonna vote them out next time. No, we going to his house, we going to his office, and we gonna put him on public blast wherever he go. We ought to make them feel so ashamed, they afraid to come to work or come outside. That's what we gonna have to do. Because remember, I always say on this show, Ladonna, this is what I say on this show, that two people politicians cater to, the ones who bankrolled them and the ones who they most fear. Those are the only two people who they cater to. They don't fear black people, because they know that a lot of us gonna vote Democrat, most of us gonna vote Democrat. We not gonna do no reason, whatever the Democrat put in front of us, we gonna vote for it. They know that. Now, we got some of us leaning red, going red, but it's not enough to balance it off. It's not enough. I'm not mad at nobody for being a Republican or a Democrat. This is America. This is your choice. You have the right to vote your interests or whatever you like, whatever party you like. I'm not knocking that. But what I'm saying is, they have got, they know us better than we know ourselves. We a bunch of talk people. When are we gonna get organized to get on one accord and put our dislikes? And like I said, we don't need 100% black people on board. We need the majority, so we can get things done. The majority of black people. Go ahead, sister.
And you know what, um, just so you know, a lot of times, we don't know how to hold our, our lawmakers accountable. We don't know how to keep our congressional leaders.
Move her volume low.
Okay, that's because you can hear. Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Is this, is this better?
Yeah, go ahead.
We've been using it too. All right, so we don't know how to, uh, hold them accountable in some cases. And a lot of times, we, like I said earlier, we jump up and down, but no matter who's in office, we have to hold them accountable. So in order to hold them accountable, Martin, you may have to repeat this. We need to stay informed of what their plans and promises are. Campaign promises are important. When you hear a leader get into office and they make promises, we need to hold them accountable for those promises. We have to keep up with public statements. If we're not doing that, then we're just jumping up and down. You have to engage in dialogue. In order to engage in dialogue, you have to attend things like the town hall meeting that we went to. I'm sorry. Hello?
I'm here. Go ahead. He allowed to clear.
Yeah. All right. Um, we have to attend those town hall meetings like we did today. We have to go to those public forums. And yeah, this is another thing that you have to add to your plate, but it has to be done. You have to be prepared to state your facts and your concerns clearly when you're in these sectors. This is what helps keep our lawmakers accountable. Otherwise, we're gonna say, okay, well, we voted them in office, let's see what happens. And if we don't like what they did, let's vote them out. That's not holding them accountable, because we're not using our voices to hold them accountable when we don't do so. I'm just saying.
And I agree with you. And you got to remember, people, we living in a capitalist place. It's capitalism, you know? It's power, wealth and power. That's what it's about. We have to compete, and we have to learn how to compete, people. Listen, listen, these migrants, illegal immigrants, whatever you want to call them, human beings, whatever you want to call them, it's all right with me. They are here to compete and eat. They don't care about no Martin Luther King, Malcolm X, Marcus Garvey, none of our leads. I'm sorry. No disrespect to our ancestors. No, they don't care about that. That means nothing to them. They're here to work and compete. That's what they're here for, and that's what they want to do. And they, by any means necessary, you, we're dealing with a people that's desperate. When you're dealing with a person that's desperate, hungry, they're willing to do anything to make it. And we so laid back, we have gotten relaxed. We've gotten relaxed as a people. We have to fight. We're not the people of the 60s. They fought. They cried. They sang. They bled together. They fought, they cried, they sang, they bled together, they died together. We have to get back to being organized. The civil rights movement, they didn't do everything perfect, but they got things done. We are enjoying some of the fruits right now of the civil rights movement.
The church organized them.
To help us out, the free food, the free healthcare. So, people, where is the help?
Taking our dollars.
We need it. We need help. We need to be organized more so than anything. We making like the sister say, we, we're making so much noise, but nothing is getting accomplished. It's like a little child going in the room, tearing his room up. And when he get done tearing his room up, his momma said, now you better go in there and clean it up. And that's what he gotta do. He going in there, cleaned up, and things go right back to normal. We know in this country, we don't control or own anything in this country. We all talk. Even our educators, they all talk. All right, if we're so smart and educated like they say we are, why can't we solve our own problems? The richest person, the richest black person in this country do not own a water supply, electricity, gas, or anything. We are a conquered people. The brother said it earlier. We have to be liberation, have to be on our mind every day, every day. They control the healthcare system, they control the education system, the money, the economics, the law, the military, the food. All of that. Listen, we at their mercy. When we go into these hospitals, we might run into a racist doctor or racist nurse that don't wanna give us the service that we deserve or we paying for. And it may cost us our life. We eating so much food that's not good for us. It tastes good, but it's not good for us. People, we, we totally depending on this system. This system was never designed for us to fit comfortably in this system. We have to fight for things that what we want. Make noise, stick together. We supposed to be like the bee hive, the bee hive, the bees. You mess with one bee, the whole hive come after you. And that's how we should be. We have to go to these town hall meetings, we have to go to these, show up at city hall, these city council meetings and fight for what we want. When we start fighting, the doors almost close. People. Things are not gonna get better. It's not gonna get better if we don't fight.
Fight right, though.
Yeah, right. Of course, of course. Well, listen, no, let me say this. When you in war, ain't no rules in war. You gotta do what you gotta do. I'm gonna just say that. That's me talking. And when I'm in war, I'm dirty. I'm fighting. Trust me. Ain't, ain't no right way to fight because they not playing by the rules anyway. Anytime you, anytime you have that much control over a man, finance, and he scared to talk back to you, we don't have nothing. What, listen, LaDonna, think about this. When they brought our ancestors over here, they didn't own anything, they didn't control anything, they didn't have anything. Right now, it's the same way. We don't own anything, we don't control anything or nothing. We have a little money, but guess what? Who faces on the money? Their face on the money. They tell you what the dollar's worth today. They can say the dollar's worth ten cent today. And the thing that we could do or say, they can tell you what a dollar is worth twenty-five cent. What can we do? Say, nothing. I had, I was at the flea market about ten years ago, Robbins Flea Market. And, you know, I'm talking all this revolutionary, near talk and black power, black love and all that. And the white guy looked at me, say, hey, man, there'd never been a revolution. I said, I'm looking at him like, what, what? He said, we control the food supply. And I didn't know what to say. I didn't have no answer. Sister, I didn't have an answer, be honest with you. He said, we control the food. I said, man, these white folks got that much power over us? Some of us right now, if they put us on a farm with some animals, we wouldn't know what to do.
If you got your forty acres and a mule, would you know how to tend to it?
We gonna have to learn how to it. We gotta learn. We gotta have to. Some of us, we, we don't know anything. We, we just don't know anything. We're not our ancestors. We're not from, even from the sixties. They, they fought, they cried, they stuck together, they sang songs.
They stayed married.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's divided. Everybody's divided. You gotta get yours, I gotta get mine. And we just so divided people, a people that's easily divided. A people that's divided is easy to be ruled. That's where we at. You red, I'm blue. You red, I'm blue. We black. One thing about America, he's gonna show you, they gonna show you what color you are. They gonna put you in your place. I don't care what party you represent. They gonna show you that you're black. We all got the same last name, black. Trust me. And they gonna look out for theirs first. The brother said it, look at the Ukrainians. They weren't sleeping in no police station. They weren't out here begging, rattling cups and all that. They had jobs for them. They get social security. They never put into social security. They got good paying jobs. You don't hear, you don't hear no talk about them here in the city of Chicago. Why? Because they're European, they're white. And white people know that they gonna look out for their own kind. They gonna, they, this, the, no scripture, no Bible gonna stop white people from looking out for each other. And we should have the same mentality. Look out for ours first. First, we love everybody, but we love ours even more. Period. That's my opinion. That's my thoughts. You guys, go ahead.
I wanna give a shout out to Inglewood Barbie. Uh, she was mentioned in your chat and she was actually awarded last night at the Chicago Urban League. Uh, she is doing.
Brother was gonna finish up what he was saying.
She is putting boots on the ground.
Everything you just said is one hundred percent right, Martin.
I don't think they can hear me.
The one on the left, the one thing I was gonna say was.
Can y'all hear?
Hello?
Hold on.
Yeah, I don't think they can hear me.
They can hear. I don't think they can hear.
I can hear Martin, but I can't, he can't hear us.
You can hear, okay, uh.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, people. We had, uh, uh, difficult. Just talking on the phone then.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me?
Can you guys hear?
No.
No. Okay, so.
Hear you, that's it.
Oh, they can't hear me. Yeah, they can't hear me.
Okay, well, tell them mute their phone and turn up their Facebook. They can hear. I'm sorry, people, we have technical difficulties. She's a tech person, I'm a tech person. I'm learning. She's way more experienced than I am, so we're gonna work this out. We.
Not if you can't hear me. Something ain't right. Um, but no, I just wanted to give a shout out to Inglewood Barbie.
You're probably here now.
She has done, um, you know, with the homeless and things of, of that nature. Um, we, I, I do wanna hear the brother finish his point. Um, there were some other points that were made at the town hall meeting. I took notes. It was, uh, definitely something that I wanna share with everyone. So, Martin, I know the guy was, wanted to finish what he was saying.
Okay. Um, was that Sarge? Sarge, was that you talk? I think you was the last person talking.
Yeah, I, I don't think it was you. I think it was the other brother.
And that was me, Martin.
Okay, go ahead, brother. Go ahead.
One point I wanna point.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I wanna point out is, and is, is, is why the church, I brought up the church a little bit earlier, was the church organized the people back then. The church are taking these federal dollars, the church, what church you know gonna get out here and bring their people? Let, allow us to organize to get, to, to bring it to city halls, to bring it to these aldermen. The church don't want nothing to do with revolution. The church is about my spiritual belief, and I believe this, when I pass away, I go here. The church is taken away. The church has been a bigger, the church has been a, a form of, of, of slavery.
How so?
It's been. The church hasn't got up and, and, and organized no protest. The church put their money in these banks and allow these banks to, to gentrify our communities. They not giving the loans to us. They giving them to the white, the white people who coming in our communities to gentrify them. The black dollar. Well, we gonna give our money to the church Sunday, the church take it to them, and they give it to their people. We have to be for real. How these Venezuelans are coming over here starving? We need to starve the exact same way at these people doorstep. And the fact, what, what upset me the most about this here, we got so many people in political positions in Chicago and Illinois and New York. We have the two, this, these are two major cities. If we move, the rest of the world will follow. We have to stand up. We have to be the ones to lead by example.
Okay, what?
If we decide that, we gonna shit.
What are you suggesting?
I suggest we stop functioning in society that's not fun.
How? How, brother? I mean, you gotta, you saying things, be, uh, be specific.
We, I, I think what my, one, one thing I, I would call it, and it's just, I, it's called a blackout. Black folks don't get up, don't go to work, don't fuck, don't go to work.
Okay, how we gonna pay?
Don't, don't, don't go to these folks stores.
Okay, how we gonna pay our bills?
Don't go to these folks.
How we gonna eat, brother?
If, if, if it's.
Brother, how are we going to eat?
Listen to this, Martin. Martin, if it's, if it's a big enough population of people that follow along, how these news coverages are covering the migrant, they gonna cover it. It ain't gonna last that long. It ain't gonna last that long to even last the building cycle. What you gonna go behind? Thirty dollars, you gonna owe Comer, what, sixty dollars? A hundred dollars? It ain't gonna last that long if we, a po, a population of people need to come together. We need to stop all these black officers. Don't go. CTA drivers, don't go. Teachers, don't go. McDonald's, don't go. Walgreens, don't go. Stop making their society work. They wanna bring other people, bring their ass. We gonna be at, at the political offices.
Okay.
We can't get organized.
We gonna be on the, at the unemployment office and the Venezuelans are gonna have our jobs.
For how long? They can have it. They can have it. This society's not working for us any longer.
Brother, how old are you? How old are you?
I'm twenty-eight years old. I have a master's degree as well, Martin.
Okay, you, okay, what are you mastering then? What are you mastering?
I have a master in psych, I have a master in psychology. I do mental health assessment.
Okay, okay. Now, my point is.
At what, at what are the?
Go ahead, go ahead, brother. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead. I'm, I'm, I'm not allowing you to go.
All, all these education that we have, when I say we, I'm grouping us all together, black people. The smarts and the expertise we have, we looking at our educated black woman right here. We can't even solve our own problems. We have no solutions. So, either, either we educated or we not. So, you telling me, you have a master's degree, this brother, this sister have a doctorate, this brother have it, and we can't solve our own problems, man? None. Everybody chasing the dollar, chasing the dollar. Listen, they got this system so set up. If we do what you say, we don't go to work, which is a good idea, cause when you hit white people in the pocket, they gonna listen then. But some of us gonna fall by the wayside. We gonna lose our jobs. Now, it may not be the case for all of us. Some jobs gonna be lost. It's gonna be trouble. It's gonna be retaliation. We know that. It's gonna be. But we have to fight. We have to fight. I understand, brother. Listen, that degree that you got, it took you how many years to get that masters? All to get with your education. I'm asking you, brother.
It took me about seven years to get a master.
Okay, now, hold it right there. Now, hold it right there. Don't you know it took them every bit of fifteen minutes to, to print your, to, uh, print your degree out? Have you ever thought about that? It took them every bit of ten or fifteen minutes to make that piece of paper and give it to you.
And that's, that's one hundred percent correct.
And, and let me say this too. Let me say this to you. That degree that you have, if it didn't come through them, they're not recognizing it. Remember that. They control the educational system. They could say right now, with your degree, they could not, they can void that degree and say, hey, you need this now. You need X amount of hours addition to this master's degree to go with this in order to qualify for the job that you doing right now. They make the rules, brother.
Well, see, Martin, Martin, what, what you're talking about right now is if a university loses their accreditation, if they lose their accreditation, those that have paperwork from said degree saying that they're qualified and whatever, okay, that piece of paper that they got that says they're qualified means nothing. And then, you know, my take on it as a college thing is basically like a hustle. I mean, how much is owed in student loan debt behind all of that terrific education?
Some of them. But education is needed. I'm not against education, though. It's definitely needed.
No, no, no. Uh-uh.
Yeah.
Martin, I'm not saying it's not needed, but it comes with a price tag. That student loan debt is fierce.
Right, but you also have to understand that the accreditation is granted and denied by them. They control the accredit, the accreditation. You, that, when, when you fail accreditation, you no longer have a school. And it's not up to you, it's up to them.
Right, that's what Morris Brown in Atlanta, when they lost their accreditation. That's how I learned about it.
Yeah. I went through an audit when I was teaching.
All the more reason, all the more reason to force a such thing as a blackout and to start it in a Chicago. We don't control anything, but we're going to get up tomorrow and go function in a society that's not for us. We need to stop functioning in a society that's not for us.
So, let's take baby steps with that. Instead of just, instead of just doing a blackout, instead of just doing a.
Only Roosevelt. Go ahead, sister. Go ahead.
If you just, instead of taking a complete blackout, why not take the dollars that you do earn and put them in specific, uh, sectors? Like, for instance, instead of shopping in a place that is not owned by blacks, shop in a place that's owned by blacks. Now, we don't own much. So, now you can take it a step further and say, I'll only spend my dollars with places that employ blacks. Okay? If you don't employ us, I'm not dropping my money. I'm not spending my money where they won't hire us and they follow us around. That, that, you, we control the economy more than you think. We put one point seven trillion dollars into the economy every year. So, we can designate those dollars wherever we want. We don't have to give them to certain colleges. We don't have to give them to certain grocery stores. We don't have to give them to certain shoe stores. We can allocate and decide where those dollars that we earn, get the money out of their pockets into ours and keep it in our community. We can do that, but we don't.
I mean, that much is very true. That much is very true. Because you can go to plenty of doggone grammar schools in the hood, and those kids are wearing Jordans. They got Apple phones and Apple products. It's like, I've never had any Apple products or Jordans in my life. Now, I'm living comfortable. I'm good. You know, my children, they're good. But move away from that materialistic price tag for an item. Stop making your identity revolve around a designer name.
Yeah, stop trading your values in for valuables. I mean, it's, it's the golden rule, but we, we do it every day. I'm not saying you, I'm not saying it is absolute. It's just that that money does not come back to our community. So, we can transfer funds.
Okay.
Yeah, that's very, that's very, that's very true, cause they're on what? The Apple, uh, not the Apple, y'all wanted the iPhone, what, fifteen?
Yeah, and I want one.
Now, I'm, okay, now, I'm sixty years old. I've never purchased fifteen phones, and that's including landlines before we had cell phones. I have not purchased fifteen phones in my lifetime, and I'm a sixty-year-old man. It just don't pass the common sense test, but with me. It's, that's, it's a me thing.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Our people, because it's not, it's not at our doorstep. We're not, like you said, we're not hungry. We're not, we don't want it. We don't want it.
We gotta be hungry, man. We.
We don't want, we don't want.
Yeah, and we don't own any cellphone companies either.
I'm not.
No, no, we don't make audible, we don't make automobiles, cars, guns. We just, people, are we just existing in what? We just here?
Absolutely. But, but, but yet, the technology for cell phones comes from the congos in Africa. Don't forget that.
Yes, of, of course. And we've made. Right, yes, of course, and we've made a lot of ventures to this comp, uh, this country, so I'm not saying, but we're, we're not owning anything. So as soon as, listen, our money would never stay with us because we, we, we own small, small things. Other words, we, we don't have grocery stores, we don't have gas stations like we used to. Cab company, bus companies and things like that. So our money would never stay in our possession, never, cuz we will always have to outsort our money, source our money, always have to do it.
Well, that's a change that became after immigrate, after, uh, not immigration, what was that thing they called it? Uh, D.
Depression?
Y'all gotta help me out here.
Depression?
Not depression.
Great migration was.
When you, no, remember when black folk couldn't go in certain neighborhoods?
Oh, segregation?
They eliminated that, what was that called?
Segregation.
Right, segregation, right, when they desegregated everything. Thank you, Martin.
That's killed us.
When they desegregated. Now, when they desegregated everything, black folk immediately ran out the neighborhood because they thought the white folks' ice in their freezer was colder than the black man's ice.
Yeah, we sick.
And it's been like that ever since.
Y'all know we sick.
Another, one more, one more, one more.
Go ahead, brother.
One more thing, Martin. We, we, we screaming this reparation thing as well. Um, we gonna allow them to write the reparations. We, we don't have, we don't even know what we want. We gonna ask the same white racist mother, MFer, to give us reparations, and we don't know what we want. They gonna let another system of white supremacy.
Well, a lot of people don't even understand the concept of reparations.
Black liberation can't be involved unless Africa is involved. We need to have dual citizenship. We need to be.
No, we don't.
Separated from, we, we don't need to pay taxes, and we, it, it needs to be on a world level. It's gonna need to be other countries involved, because we're gonna need to get land in Africa.
Do you know Africans call, do you know that Africans call us Tuba or Kata? Are you familiar with that, young man? And I don't say young man in a disrespectful way.
I don't take no offense to it, old school.
Let me, let me just say.
No, but are, are, are you familiar with that?
Uh.
I've heard of it.
Okay, hold it right there, hold it right there. We don't wanna go there. Let me go to Roosevelt, then Marcus, then we gonna get out of here and then our speaker have a last word. Go ahead, Roosevelt. He gotta put his phone on.
I feel also, I, 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 I feel also too, that, um, us as black people need to stop being against each other and stop killing each other. As a matter of fact, there's something, I think that every single black gang member needs to stop fighting each other and rise up against, you know, whatever is coming and whatever is here, you know, you all know what we've been talking about, because I think that we got a far bigger problem than, you know, anything else. And I think they, they, they're gonna be our warriors. Every black gang needs to come together in a mighty army to fight, or help us fight this whole migrant problem, cuz that's the only kinda way that this whole thing is gonna end, in bullets. Because that's all America understands is violence.
Okay, now Roosevelt.
There you go, Roosevelt.
Hold it, Roosevelt, let's hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, man. Man, we know our gun is not bigger than the white man gun, period. They are the producers of it, trust me, period. Let me just say this, man. Let me say this, uh, out of respect to you, Roosevelt, this shouldn't have to come down to a gunplay. Do you know that China declared war on America? Well, you say, well, Martin, what you talking about? Through, through their economy, they competing with us, so there's more than one way to fight with our bullets. Now, it's necessary, but you have to know how to fight. The art of war, brother. It ain't worth picking up no gun, cuz matter of fact, you're not gonna beat the white man with no gun. That's his life.
But he's not talking about the white man, he's talking about the migrant.
Listen, who you think put the migrants here?
I'm talking about going against them.
Hold on, first of all, first of all, first of all, the migrants are classified as being white. They are, they are protected class, and they not gonna allow you to wipe out the migrants and they don't help them. Trust me, that's not gonna happen. The migrants are here not to serve black people's interests, they here to serve white people's interests. Remember that.
White supremacy ain't white no more.
That's, well, hey.
Okay, if you say so.
I, I, listen, I'm telling you, I'm telling you. Do you think they bringing the migrants over here to benefit black people? No. It's to benefit them and their causes and their problems. That's why they here. Matter of fact, who you think hiring the migrants? The white people. Who you think told them to come over here? White people, white supremacy, like the brother said. They not just walking over here like they're pet, just coming over here. Who you think paying them? White supremacists? With our own money, with our tax dollars? We financing our own oppression? They showing us that we're nothing. Marcus, go ahead. Go ahead, Marcus.
I just wanna say this. Black people need to come together, especially our young black people. The, the rap music about killing your own people need to stop. I, I don't think a lot of the young black people really understand what is going on in this country. They think that someone from the street, they don't care about what's going on politically. They, they don't care about that town hall meeting, cuz if they did, it would have been out the door. They don't care about it. We have to come together. American foreign policy is dangerous. America is playing bo- both sides with their war over there in Israel. Americans playing both sides. Americans know how to play both sides to benefit white supremacy. And right now, both the blacks and the migrants are being played against each other, all for the glory of white supremacy.
Mm-hmm.
But in the end, in the end, the white man think he God. He think he God. This wicked world, not the world itself, I ain't misquoting the Bible, but I think people misunderstand. Why would God destroy this beautiful earth and everything that he created? He's gonna destroy this wicked government of the nations of the world that's run by white supremacy, European, and they bringing other white people over here to replace black people, and they got the other people from Venezuela. They got us against the Venezuela, and it is working well, because we are against them, but it's not gonna work, because God ain't gonna let this happen. God is God and he's real. Laquan McDonald brought people out of the woods. Laquan McDonald's death got a major mayor booed when people, when black people were silent in this city when Daley was in office. And a lot of what's going on in this city right now was Daley's administration, and it was the black ministers and they big ego churches, celebrity churches endorsing this man. There were black media endorsing this racist who didn't care nothing about black people, but he knew how to get in the minds of the right black people and play them against each other by giving them position. They got up there and they forgot about their people. We gotta quit allowing ourselves to be bought, and we got to be willing to fast. We got to willing to go without food sometimes. That's what our ancestors did, so that, so that we could be where we at today. But some of our black politicians have gotten up there and they've whined and dined and even did drugs behind closed doors with these people, and they think that they are part of these people and look down on their own people. Some of your worst landlords are black landlords who don't wanna do nothing for their property but collect rent money, but will have you living in, in a, in a shack that they wouldn't even put a dog in. We have got to come together as a people and start loving each other and staying together and staying for something. If we gonna walk off these jobs, walk off these jobs. If we gonna shut down the aid office, they know what's going on, shut the aid office down. If we can't get it, can't nobody get it. If you can give migrants nine thousand dollars, used to be giving American citizens who are living in poverty twenty thousand dollars. This country got money, but it ain't got money for us.
All right, thank you, guys. I'm gonna conclude it with our dear sister, uh, Ladonna, uh, your closing thoughts and everything?
Yeah, my closing thoughts, hopefully you guys can hear me, are that hopefully, you know, black folks always come together when there's chaos. So I'm hoping that with the migrants' situation, that we all come together, tighten up, and strengthen our own communities. That means starting with the families, our children, our elders, and everyone else. And like the brother said, don't kill your soldiers, because we're gonna need them. If you kill off your soldiers, you gonna be left there on the front lines with bows and arrows.
Mm-hmm. All right. All right, well, again, I wanna thank you, my dear sister, for coming on here. Uh, it was such late notice. I did interview you earlier today at the thing. I appreciate you for, uh, coming on the platform. And, uh, man, it's, it's been a joy. I, you know, one thing about this platform, and I know you don't know, no matter if we agree or not, we like for everyone to express themselves, you know? And that's fair. You know, it's a lot of times I hear things, I don't agree with it, but I do allow it to come over here, because I want people to express themselves, you know, because this is the purpose of this platform. It's a voice for the voiceless, and that's what I wanna do. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make it like a Jerry Springer show. I don't want us to be on here disrespecting one another, calling each other out names and all that. We can disagree to agree, as we say. We can't do that, because everybody have an opinion, and that's why certain things I said today, I said, this is just my opinion. When I say my opinion, that don't mean it's written in stone, that is law, that is always right. And I always tell my listening audience, I said, Martin Johnson do not know everything. I never claimed to know everything. And if I'm wrong, I need to be checked, and if you wrong, you need to be checked, period. In love, though, in love now, in love, in love, not embarrassed, not made to feel little, but in love, you know? You got something to say about that, sister?
No. No, I'm listening to you, because like you said, we've known each other for a long time.
Long time.
And, uh, I, uh, I, you, you know, you've, I'm really proud of you.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that you are reaching out to the community using your platform for good and not for, you know, the opposite.
Right.
And I wanna just say thank you for even having me. I'm, I'm ve- very honored, you know, to be a part of this tonight. I'm so glad that we ran into each other at the same, uh, town hall meeting, because obviously we were there to hear what the people had to say and what our leaders had to, our congressional leaders had to say. Um, but you know, sometimes we, we don't agree.
Right.
Uh, but, but everybody's dealing with their own issues, their own distractions, and their own situations. I remember my mother telling me that when she was dealing or working with alongside the Black Panther Party, they were talking about going back to Africa, and she was with them until they said that, you know? I was with the brother till he said, don't eat. And I was like, wait a minute now, we gotta restructure this, because I have children that depend on me to feed them, so I can't just say we're not gonna eat today. So we will, we will come up with a solution. I'm, I'm confident at knowing that, uh, we as a people will come together and come up, come up with a solution, so that we can stop renting space here and actually be citizens and not three fifths of a human.
Mm-hmm, perfect. I said property, that's what they call three fifths of property, whatever you wanna call it. But all right, appreciate you, guys. Um, this is my little cue, y'all. You already know what it is.
What is?
Live, uncut, unedited. This is where we tell the truth.
And what?
And shame the devil. Now, I don't know about you, but I love being black. I love being black. Now, some folks only love being black around, uh, February, you know? They proud of being black then, but the rest of the months, they quiet, their head tucked down, and they ashamed of being black. And I wanna say to my listening audience, no matter what you see on social media, as you call it, black on black crime or whatever you wanna call it, no ma- no matter how you see us acting up on social media, don't ever let nobody take away your joy of being black, cuz we are great, we are great people. We don't practice hate. We are loving people, very understanding people. Most of the time, we do more damage to ourselves than to other people. So let us be great, let us love on one another, let us build up our self-esteem and love who you are. Trust me. And when I see people, I was, I always say live, uncut, unedited, I love being black. You can put me in a house full of white people and you gonna still hear me say, I love being black. Now, if they got a problem with me saying that, shame on them, shame on them. If a gay person can walk in this country and say, I'm proud to be gay, and I can't say that I'm proud to be black, something wrong with that picture. And one thing about a gay person that's different from me, a gay person have an option to be straight. A black person, we don't have no other option but to be black.
You can check a different box on the census. There's no law that says I have to check the box that says anything. I'm just saying.
That complexion, that complexion is gonna tell it all. I tell anybody, I don't care how proper you talk, how correct your grammar is, get pulled over by the police, and you, they'll show you what your last name is. They'll show you. Hey, I gotta go, people. We can go on and on and on and on and on and on, but.
Hey, follow this man, follow him, follow Martin Johnson. Make sure that you are following him and telling people to follow him.
Yes, 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 yes. All right, people, good, well, it's good morning now. It's twelve, it's almost one o'clock in the morning. Uh, thank y'all for staying up late with me, and I know some of y'all gotta be at work in the morning. Thank you so much, appreciate you, appreciate you. Good night, well, good morning, whatever you wanna call it, good morning, good night.